Okay. All right. Good evening and welcome to the Joint North Bend City Council Urban Renewal Work Session for Monday, December 4th at four thirty here in the council chambers. I'd like to welcome everybody who's watching online and who is all here in person this evening. After calling the meeting to order, we'll go ahead and begin with public comment. And it looks like I have one public comment here in person and nobody online, correct? All right. So before I begin with the public comment, I'd like to go ahead and let everybody know that we thank everyone for participating in the public comment this evening. And that the public comment period is an essential part of local government meetings. Each person has three minutes to speak and our governing body takes input into consideration. However, in observance of Oregon Open Meeting laws, this isn't a time for dialogue, but rather a time for us to listen to you. Our city administrator and city recorder are taking any notes of action if needed. Okay, so the person we have tonight is Jessica Mead. So Jessica, you can go ahead and come forward. We have a mic right here at the table. And when you're ready, we'll go ahead and have the city recorder begin their timing.
Can I start?
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay. Good evening, everyone, and thank you to my Salon Bella supporters. My name is Jessica Mead. I am here today with my business partner and best friend Catherine Stout. We are the owners of Salon Bella. We are coming forward regarding the purchase of twenty sixty-six Sherman Avenue. In November of twenty fourteen, we had a goal to be a successful women-owned business in North Bend. Catherine and I began with just the two of us. We then expanded to two other women to our team. Callie Adams and Brittany Cooper. On September fourteenth of this year, we received an email from Mr. Milliron, which began one of the most stressful processes we have ever been through. It had multiple statements that were incorrect and contained false information. One included incorrect square footage that would have resulted in our rent going up a hundred and eight percent. Through our records and due diligence, the square footage has been corrected. However, we are still facing a forty-eight percent increase. We have occupied this space for nine years. It is extremely unfortunate that the city failed to do a proper inspection or any inspection at all on our space when it was purchased. During the first unpleasant meeting with Mr. Milliron, I addressed his statement saying that Urban and Renewal Agency is responsible for major maintenance and Salon Bella is responsible for minor maintenance. He had zero interest in reviewing any maintenance responsibility questions regarding the condition of the space. He said to send him an email and he would address each issue. He also laughed when I tried to show him references from roofers, plumbers, and contractors who have all previously worked on the property. He failed to respond to any of the issues I emailed him and instead gave us a contract that said Salon Bella is shall maintain, repair, and replace the premises, and the tenant's obligations extend to both structural and non-structural. This resulted in us hiring a property law attorney who has advised us not to sign the lease for multiple reasons. As construction has started, workers have stated health concerns they have for us when they opened up the front exposing rot and mold. They have voiced concerns the time of year that has been chosen, which may result in further water damage. As courteous and apologetic as they have been, we would like prior notice of construction days. We have clientele refusing services during construction hours due to the noise. Salon Bella had no intentions of relocating. We just repainted the outside this summer to keep up with the downtown Main Street vision. We are proof that women can own and succeed at running a small local business. Mr. Milliron, on behalf of the city of North Bend, is single-handedly forcing us out of our location of nine years. If my children were not in the North Bend School District, we would relocate our business from North Bend to another town with a representative that would support ours business and respect us as women. At this time, we will remain in North Bend in hopes that relocating doesn't destroy Salon Bella by removing it from its thriving location. Our incredibly awful experience with Mr. Milliron is almost over. We are asking the council to have an impact and let us continue working in this space until March thirty-first, twenty twenty-four on a month-to-month basis as we have been since January first of twenty twenty-two. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. All right. Thank you for participating in public comment this evening. Next on the list is number three, and that is ORS regarding the sale and lease property owned by the Urban Renewal District. And I believe this was our councillor Norodoff had a request for this.
I have copied up the guidance on urban renewal from the League of Oregon Cities and the Oregon Municipal Handbook. And the second one back is there are two documents here and I pointed out the appropriate section, so we'll review them. And lastly, I will speak to the our city's urban renewal plan and what it says about acquisition and disposition of properties.
Do we want to give our attorney a moment to be able to pull this up electronically or?
All documents are supposed to be provided by noon on Wednesday for discussion at the work session. So it's up to the council whether or not they want to move forward with this discussion or postpone it to a subsequent meeting. That would allow the attorney to prepare because he doesn't have any of this in front of him.
Okay. Um, council, if our attorney doesn't have a copy of this, it'd be hard to move forward with the discussion. So do we need to postpone this to another meeting?
Well, we can't be represented by council.
Yeah, so that's since the timeframe is that we need to have them so that everybody has a copy.
Yes, well, this is documentation in support of what I'm going to speak to and they can take at home. We are frequently given items during the work session as reference and to take home. So I don't expect there won't be an exam on this. It's it's information that I'm providing because it's it's in support of what I have put on the agenda.
Um, so I heard from councillor Norodoff, I heard from our council president. What is the will of the rest of the council?
I think this is kind of interesting to the next meeting or something so that everybody, you know, including our attorney can have all the materials.
Okay, I'm hearing from councillor Jones.
Usually we want to get this stuff. Usually it's in our box and we have time to look at it for the weekend before we walk in on Monday. And so again, when we get a little electronic copy, and so I do feel like me not knowing what I'm looking at. I don't feel comfortable.
Okay, may I just speak to it then as to the general summary of it? I can read it right here.
Um, let me go ahead and bring Mark Wolf online here too. So he's clear what's happening. Hello, Mr. Wolf.
Hello, Mayor and Council.
I've got you on a little bit of a low volume here. My volume is very sensitive. I don't know if our city recorder can fix that.
Um, this is also.
I'm gonna one one moment, please. Yeah. Can you, are you, is your volume full up there, Mr. Wolf?
We're checking it here locally.
Okay.
Can you hear me okay?
Uh, you're a little bit soft here, so I want to see if we can turn it up before we continue. Our city recorder is checking some of our equipment here.
So I just tried to to raise my mic level on my end. Did that help at all?
Not really. I think it is something with our volume here. Let's see here. Let's let's see if you're a little bit.
All right, testing, one, two, three.
For some reason, he's coming out of that instead of up there.
How about now?
Testing once again.
Okay, we're better. Uh, so um, just to make sure that we're, um, it's very clear here. We have a an item on our agenda for ORS regarding the sale of lease of properties owned by the Urban Renewal District. Um, and councillor Norodoff did not hand in the documents ahead of time. She handed us some now. Um, and one of those items is the Oregon Municipal Hand Handbook, Chapter twenty-six for Economic Development. This is some guidance from the League of Oregon Cities. Um, so but with you not having a copy of it or the council not having time to review it, um, we are gathering a consensus from our council that it might be best to move this to the next meeting so that we have prepared time for this document. Um, so that is kind of where we're at right now. I didn't know if you had any thoughts before.
I don't think there's a there's a right answer in this situation. If the if the council wants, you know, more time to review these documents, I think that would be appropriate. If you want to give councillor Norodoff a moment to to speak on the issue, then that would be appropriate. But if 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 there's a lengthy amount of material that has just been presented, maybe it's best to 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 delay this.
Hmm. I've heard from, I believe, three of the councillors, Garbonin, Jones, and Schultz would feel more comfortable. Gall and Hamilton, how are you feeling before we decide if we want to? At the in the two weeks, yeah. And councillor Gall?
Yeah, I mean, this is, I'm trying to read all this stuff and I ain't a very good reader, but yeah.
Okay. I'm gonna go ahead and ask then, after hearing a consensus from our council, ask our city reporter to move this to the next work session so we can properly be prepared. Okay, all right, thank you. Well, so, um, well, we've just moved it to the next meeting, so I'm gonna go ahead and go on.
I have intent of putting something else on the next meeting, so I will then claim two agenda items at the next meeting.
We'll go ahead and work that out in the details of what the what the rule is.
Yes, two agenda items for me.
Well, I'm not making a commitment to that right now. I'm not making a commitment to those two items.
I'm prepared to speak to this very, very similarly, very quickly.
I'm gonna go ahead and move it to the next meeting. You've just given us a pretty thick packet and we want to make sure that we're prepared to have this discussion. So the rule is it needs to be Friday at noon, correct, of all the documents to be?
Wednesday at noon.
I'm sorry, Wednesday. Okay, so we'll go ahead and move that and then we'll work out the details of the other agenda items. Number four on the agenda then is the October twenty-eighth Events Committee. And this is a councillor, let's see here, number four is, yes, councillor Garbonin requests. We have some information on this for page twelve, and this is about, looks like the information is on the candy call. I think I'm gonna ask the, um, maybe the city recorder to close the doors just so I can hear it a little bit better. Yeah.
Which line item is that?
Is it staffing?
Yes, that's all inclusive of all staffing, all.
Yeah, I didn't hear you guys call the next, sorry. Um. Yeah, the staffing is for city staffing. No, that is, that is the security and crossing guards would be the flaggers. I had three. For four hours.
Well, they're cheap.
What's that? That's why we feel it was very, very important to the Main Street Board to have safe crossing for the all the children. We had a thousand children at the event. Yes.
Trying to dissect the numbers here. You know, I I I embarrassed people for like a vast, whatever else. We can't get them near that close, but that's fine. On the revenue side, it's seven stroll for July and October. For those basically needed revenues or funds from seven scrolls that it the purpose for the seven stroll.
Yes, so a lot of the events we do downtown through Main Street is generated from the revenue that we get from sip and stroll. That's direct donated funds that we use for our events. So the board, um, allocates certain dollars to certain events. Anything that is extra we use from the fundraising and donations, so.
Okay, and other fundraising activity and donation, or those donations from?
Yeah, for instance, this weekend, we had our Main Street donation bucket at the events. Um, we were providing cider and cookies and people donated to our program. And so we do receive outside donations aside from just the sip and stroll events. Yeah, no worries.
Any other questions anybody has on like the list of expenses and?
Oh, that's basically, I don't want to maybe never ten grand.
No, we don't know. Maybe.
Correct, and, um, that and the largest charge on here, um, you'll see is the candy. I want to clarify that this candy is for this, the Main Street program and the city departments for that event. That any businesses that participate or conquer tree outside businesses that come in, they provide their own candy or giveaways. So this is just for city use and we purchased enough candy to hand out that day for the thousand plus kids as well as all the children at the Christmas event this past weekend, and they'll have candy left over for Easter as well. So we kind of did a bulk buy while it was on sale and got candy for future events, not just for the candy crawl. So we do have some leftover.
Where's that candy now?
It's stored away in a safe. For friends and all. Yeah, we stuffed it in stockings. One of the local Catholic churches donated, um, like two hundred stockings for the Christmas event this weekend. So instead of buying candy canes, we use the candy that we already have from the existing event and stuffed it in those free stockings so that goodie for them costs us nothing for additional.
Hmm, good.
But try to be as resourceful as we can.
All right.
Yeah.
Any other, any other questions about this? Good. Details, okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, where does she go? Back to this. Okay, so that took care of the candy call, um, discussion. So we're moving right along. Number five is review of the city council agenda for December fifth. And then after that, we'll go into the Urban Renewal Agency agenda. So let's go ahead and grab those. Tuesday, December fifth. And then urban renewal. Okay, so Tuesday, December fifth, and so Mr. Miller, and it looks like we're gonna open the meeting and then go into some ceremonial items.
Yes, uh, the first would be, um, uh, Lieutenant Rick Cooper has retired from the department, uh, and so uh, with cancellation of the November meetings, this is pushing into December. So we'll be recognizing, uh, retired fire lieutenant Rick Cooper for twenty-six years of service.
Yeah. Do we know, have we confirmed that he'll be here? Okay, you think he'll want to do the all the photos and everything as well? Great, so bring your best smiles, folks. Okay?
Um, the, uh, second would be a ceremonial swearing in. This is a new patrol officer, so I'll call start. Uh, and then, uh, there's a proclamation for Zonta says no.
Okay.
Um, that's followed by the approval of the minutes for the October twenty-fourth meeting. Is there any additions, deletions, or clarifications?
So just as a reminder to council, this would be the time if you wanted to pull something from the consent calendar, this is where we would do it now.
I thought that meant that Zonta didn't want to hear where I'm at.
Saying, no, thank you. No, yeah, so, um, council, so, uh, is, does anybody have any issues with, uh, the approval of the minutes or as we're looking at anything else from the consent calendar? This would be the time now.
All right, the next would be the acknowledgement of the bills. And then last but not least, we have a repair to the pulsator, um, on combination sewer cleaner. Uh, if you'd like to understand what a pulsator is, we can bring up your public works director and, uh, he can, uh, explain to you that quote, but other than that, it's a straight consent budgeted item.
Okay. All right, there's no questions here.
All right, next would be public comments. We now go into special events committee recommendation. That's on page nineteen. Um, this is a holdover, uh, from a previous gen item. It's now been documented into, um, of the published recommendations. And so, um, that is on page nineteen.
And did?
And that back over to you, Madam Mayor.
Yeah, it was gonna say, so on number nineteen, we had talked at a previous workshop session, um, uh, and gone over some, um, the notes that I was reading from are included in this packet on page nineteen. And and basically just kind of as a refresher that, um, the special events committee was tasked with meeting to come up with a recommendation after soliciting input from our citizens and a social media survey. If July Jubilee was something that we, the community wanted to move forward with. Um, and after receiving some of, um, having those conversations and receiving that input, it was a resounding yes. And also that July is still a really important month that they wanted to see it in. So at the bottom of page twenty-one, you'll see that the recommendation of the special events committee um, is that there is an official recommendation to the city of North Bend to bring back the July Jubilee in twenty twenty-four, um, scheduled for July. Um, after speaking to a couple of business owners, um, they have some events already planned for that weekend. So for example, the back alley that typically does the car show is already scheduled for a certain week in July. So we have those um, dates, I believe the fifteenth or so, but I have those that we can provide. Um, we'd also propose that the special events committee continues to serve as an advisory board to provide recommendations and just maintain a maintain a feedback loop, um, for the council and recruit more volunteers for the twenty twenty-four July Jubilee. Um, and then also there was a note in here, um, that as the July Jubilee has not been held for several years and is being reimagined, uh, we would suggest that, um, and request that the North Bend July Jubilee applies for a three thousand dollar tourism, uh, grant to support the successful execution of this event. So this was information that was provided last time and the council wanted a little bit more time to just digest that before that they make an official, I guess, would it would be a vote to accept the recommendation tomorrow? That's how we, is that how we have it listed?
Was it two things where we have to agree to keep it going? And then, yeah. I think it's to keep the vote to keep it going and then also to suggest that they like or something, or is that separate?
Sure. To accept the recommendation.
Oh, did that the right?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Anybody know or any?
That's as opposed to be on one.
I was curious. Got a lot of historical knowledge, yes.
I was curious and we can, we can point these out. It's got a nice list here. I was curious if you've been successful recruiting any volunteering groups for the ones that are already not accounted for. Because that was the, to me, that was the missing piece for making this committee, you know, it's it's a pilot right now, but
Yeah.
until I see that the committee is successful recruiting volunteer groups to do the events that they'd like to add.
Yeah.
I think that's a whole.
So the first task was really to decide, collect my, we'll decide to make a recommendation of, is this even something that needs to be, you know? I there was a part of me, I'm like, I didn't know at first if people would say like, we don't want July Jubilee. Uh, that's not what we heard. And so once that, the special events committee really was tasked with two things because we did task that that group with also looking at how to, um, celebrate some of the National Historic Society things, if you remember that. Um, but the task one is to to decide if to make a recommendation to this council. And that's what this is. And then if that recommendation is, um, accepted with some of the other things that's listed, then that next step would be having that group reach out to the community and recruit, like, what would Rotary want to do? As Lions Club, the different, um, you know, there could be fundraising opportunities if somebody wanted to have a fun run or something like that. That group could help recruit community volunteers.
So I still, so I'm not clear then on what we're.
Okay, so let's see how it's listed here.
That still sounds like we're figuring out how the committee can actually plug into play. So it still seems like a pilot to me. And that's fine, we can do that. I'm, so I just wouldn't recommend it here.
Okay, so on the second sentence says, okay, so the first sentence says, the North Bend Special Events Committee officially recommends that the city of North Bend bring back July Jubilee. Right, that's the, that was what their task to do is is to look at this. Then we also propose that the special events committee continues to serve as an advisory board to provide recommendations, maintain feedback loop, and recruit more volunteers.
Yeah, so previously it could have been all, remember they were thinking all calendar year maybe, maybe not July, but they've done some research. They say potentially people do want July, so that's like, that's what they're saying.
Seems like a long, long motion. You need to make it tomorrow.
Well, so in the, just to be clear too with, um, to our staff, on the number five, it says for tomorrow evening, special events committee recommendation. Is that a vote then to to either accept or deny the recommendations?
Well, the, the council created the committee and the committee is bringing back recommendations. So the council can accept or reject or modify recommendations. And then it'll be the will of the council is to decide what it wants or does not want to do with those recommendations.
Got it. So, so so tomorrow night, a suggested motion could be uh, somebody could motion, I accept the recommendation with a modification if they wanted to. That we're, is that?
Good.
Okay. Okay.
And so this is just saying, bring back July Jubilee in some form for twenty twenty-four. Apply for the a three thousand dollar grant. That, so those are the two bits.
It well, and sentence two is we propose that the special events continues to serve as an advisory board to provide recommendations, maintain feedback loop, and recruit more volunteers. So that, I guess to answer your question earlier, no, recruiter, no. That's the recommendation. So you said have they have more volunteers been recruited yet? Not yet, because that's the recommendation.
Yeah, until they, till they go forward with Jubilee, there's nothing to recruit.
Yeah, okay, so.
Okay. When the question for are, do we even have to have people other to keep maintaining the?
It was, I believe the original, um, committee was set for six months.
I thought there was a chance.
No, I know we did it here.
Or what?
No, it's real short, I think. I think we did it real short.
It was six months.
Mister Mister Miller is saying that the original committee was set for six months, so we're looking at tomorrow night what this motion would look like. Is it, you know, if is it just to accept the recommendations?
I mean, that's, that's one option as, as Mr. Milliron pointed out that these are the recommendations. So one option, one option is, uh, you know, somebody make a motion to approve the recommendations as presented. Or to approve the recommendations as modified by X, Y, and Z. Or I move to, uh, not take the recommendations and uh, terminate the special events committee.
I just think six months is coming up, isn't it? There are only like two months left.
Correct, but part of this, part of this, uh, recommendate, part of the motion of recommending or, uh, accepting the recommendations is to extend that special events committee.
Okay.
So can we put, uh, can we continue to put a sunset on this just so that we can get through a couple of the cycles to figure out how it works?
Once the committee is no longer functioning or serving a purpose, it just we terminate it.
I don't think that's the intention though.
No, but I mean, as long as it's doing its job and and
coming back to us.
Coming back.
Yeah.
Whatever else. If we continue with the, the special events committee, it will be continuing as long as it's need.
And reported on through the council, reported that feedback loop is, would come back to the council when we have committee reports, then the special events committee could raise their hand and say, hey, it's July Jubilee is coming up, we will be having a post report. And there could be recommendations from that committee at another time that says, hey, this year went well, we want to continue this, you know, further or whatever.
Yeah, I mean, so, so my only concern is just that it turns into another list to hand into two staffers effectively. So, so that's why I'm interested in can we see a full circle where, you know, until we make it an official advisory board committee, this sort of extended thing, we have a full circle of, these are the recommendations we brought. These, this was how we enabled the city through the volunteer connections that we made to do those things.
You know what I'm saying? No, do you think the mid committee should not lead anymore, is what you're saying?
No, I'm just concerned, I can't tell if this means we've made it a permanent committee or we've put it on schedule to review. And my main concern is just that it turns into another list for
Well, you could Well, you could review it like the first meeting in August. That way the Jubilee can come the following, you could have the post report on how it did and then the, the first meeting in August. Could be, okay, do we want to keep doing this with this meeting?
Yeah.
Or do you guys?
So we could add that to the motion to be reviewed.
Write that down.
Yeah.
As twenty twenty-four?
Yeah.
Cause I just think it's really important, we go through a cycle, we get, you know, cause if, to, we get, we get more organizations involved. So that more events can be run then without additional staff.
And I would say to get proper um, the numbers, I don't know how long it took to get like the candy fall numbers. But maybe uh, the first meeting in August might be a little too soon, like it might take some, I would say September probably be better. So.
Thank you.
Four numbers.
Okay, any more questions about item five on the agenda? Okay, then we get to talk about some really exciting um, ODOT for permits who allow work at nights. I don't know if Mister Milliron or, or wants to, or Ralph Dunham would like to talk about that.
Well, this is straightforward, if you will, ODOT's um, uh, going to be doing a lot of ADA ramp replacements. And they want to do some of this work at night and they realized, oops, um, we were supposed to ask the city for a permit. And so, um, it's uh, uh, normally. The, this is one of those things that I always say, this should be administrative, but it's actually says it comes before the council. So ask come before the council and say, yeah, okay, ODOT, you can work at night on your state highway.
Yeah, we're not gonna say no.
Right.
So, but it's, it's all, it's one of these things that has gotten propagated in, in your code that says it comes before the council. So that's, it's, it's, to me, it's a straightforward, but y'all have to decide.
Yeah.
Okay. Will the, just because our curiosity, will, will there be any notification to the, any of the businesses?
Uh, ODOT actually does um, a number of distributions. The city also mirrors those distributions. So ODOT has a media list that they put out. We then put it on our website and social media. That's not to say everyone gets it because we hear from businesses saying, hey, how come they didn't tell me that they were going to block entrance to the city? And um, I said, well, that big huge orange sign there that said detour ahead. Um, when they started putting those up, was, was your indication that something was going to happen? And to raise your hand, they kind of waited a little late um, to raise their hand.
Okay. Okay.
Mayor? Mister, um, Dunham had his hand up, would you want to stick some?
Um, excuse me, staff um, works through the city manager. So if you want to have yield staff, we got to follow the rules. And since we're a rule follower, we want to make sure that we're following the rules.
So we can't hear from the public works director?
If there were questions, I can yield the staff, it's clearly in your staff, in your, your rules. So.
Um, did uh, was there anything else on this from you or anything that the Public Works Director needed to add more?
The only thing I wanted to add, David, was, they said that since this is a long time period, I asked that they notify us. In a certain Jenny's question, three weeks ahead of time.
Oh, yeah.
So we may send a notice out.
Okay.
Because their schedule's gonna fluctuate. Uh, but.
Can't be a bucket, right?
And they've already, they've already been screening during daylight, but in, since the Heights area, but the rest of them in industrial areas.
Thank you, all right. So it's a pretty simple meeting then tomorrow night, if that is requested by ODOT was kind of the last thing, then we go into action. If any resulting from executive session, I don't believe in here. We might, are we gonna have an executive session tomorrow night? Nope, no executive sessions. Um, and then I haven't met, well, we'll go into committee reports or the city administrators' report, committee reports, council comments, other business and enjoyment. So pretty straightforward. So should we go ahead and walk through the Urban Renewal Agency meeting now? And um, tomorrow night looks like after we call the order, meaning to order in the public comments, we would go straight into the minutes. And then into the bills. And then number five is Sherman Avenue, um, Chickorille's Yard Improvements. So, and you know, Mister Miller, can I take this time to ask you? Just a couple of questions about, well, actually go ahead and let's talk about the yard improvements first.
Okay.
Honorable Mayor, members of City Council, uh. Herman Construction has been hired by North Forty Beer Company. To do the interior remodel of Chickarelli's uh, based upon their lease. At the same time, and they have a target date of January fifteenth, I believe, to move in. We were informed of this about a month ago. We had failing retaining walls, a stairway that's needed for an exit way in the back of the structure. A wood stairway failing wood retaining walls, a fence that was in pretty, very sad shape. Uh, so in order to facilitate and the less ease, which includes Salon Bella. Have access to the backyard uh, and utilize that under their lease. Um, utilize those premises. In order to fit in with their schedule, because there's really no access to that backyard. Um, we contacted Jim Crow, who owns the Humble Club. Uh, and made an arrangement with him to be able to access through his property, which is off of Union Avenue. Um, timing was important on this, so we didn't have a lot of room to solicit multiple contractors. Uh, I solicited a contractor who I've worked with off and on over the last eighteen years, um, named FRC Construction, who does. Paver systems, um, people call them stack block retaining walls, mechanically stabilized earth, the. The typical block walls, you stack block walls that you see. And we received a price for them to do this, uh. And they can meet, time is kind of the essence, they can meet the schedule on this particular project. Um, they gave us a price of forty-eight thousand, six hundred dollars to improve this, which includes five retaining walls. Pavers, the fence, replacing some concrete. Um, basically making that in a, a fireplace, there was a fireplace there, I don't know if any of you noticed that, there's an old. Fireplace in the back, it was rotted out, it had a metal liner in it, it was rotted out, gone. So this uh, improvements was for access. Failing retaining walls and then basically sprucing it up a little bit, because they're putting pavers in a portion of the backyard area. Um, because we're having to tear the decking out to do this, so instead of putting wood decking back in, what we're doing is we're putting pavers. Um, this is part of the Urban Renewal Project. They fit the timeframe that matches our forty beer company's schedule to open the property. And in order to do this at a later date, once that business would be open. Would be both a much, much higher cost and. Once access is closed through the backyard, they're um, you know, having to import all this through the restaurant instead of. Turn down the fence and working it from the back. Um, we did include in part of this, a minor improvement for the Humboldt Club. They had some broken sidewalk, a piece nine foot by five foot, and we said, thank you for allowing us access, we'll fix that while we're here, but. That's only a portion, that's actually an improvement for them.
Sorry, Ralph, but who, two questions, who, who'd you say, it's Harmon, did you say Harmon?
Harmon is doing the interior remodel and uh.
Is it a date, they want to open?
They want to open approximately January fifteenth.
Oh. Uh, next?
January fifteenth.
This and twenty twenty-four.
Wow, okay.
Yeah, um, and I know we're, we're in a work session now, so it's a little bit more, we can ask some more questions. I think this would be a good opportunity, because we have some new counselors that might not be familiar exactly. U R A is very complicated and what the process is and how the bidding and the. Works a little bit differently than a normal city business. And I don't know if this would be a good time for either the city attorney or the city manager at Ralph to answer some of those questions. Cause I would imagine that you would have some questions, yes.
I think it should wait until two weeks from now when we discuss my agenda item, because it's definitely overlapping and. They will have before them the state guidance on such things.
So.
Well, this is the. I think it also refers to the appropriate ways of handling urban renewal. And in fact, I had printed out the page from our urban renewal plan that says that. Um, if the city is to acquire property, that the urban renewal plan needs to be amended, would you please take one and pass it down?
So um, thank you, Councilor Nordoff, for your feedback. Um, I do think this work section, this is an item that we're discussing for urban.
I, all on the city.
Councilor Nordoff, I am running the meeting, not you, so please. I am running, Councilor Nordoff, we are on a different agenda item right now, I am running the meeting and not you.
What agenda item?
Councilor Nordoff, we are talking about. Number five, and I have some new counselors on that I'm going to ask if they have some questions about U R A. And how that works and Mister Wolf, I am hoping here that um, we can ask you or our city manager. Um, if they have any questions, because this is a new process. So, um, Councilor Jones, I think I saw you kind of raise your hand a little bit there. Did you have any specific questions?
I did, so I, I feel like I recall when we talked about this property and the opportunity to. Um, buy it and uh, lease it and, you know, this process. And I was just curious if, and I believe I remember there were several inspections before they even came. And that was part of the prep work that uh, the city provided, or the city walked through before bringing it even as an idea. And I'm curious if this was a piece of that.
It was, the uh, um, Ralph Dunham uh, was actually uh, present during those uh, inspections. Uh, we actually had a number of uh, folks, including even our uh, uh, building official.
Yeah.
Uh, there was actually a contractor on site. Um, and so the physical property was negotiated and bought as is. And so we wanted to make sure what we were actually acquiring. Um, and so you um, heard earlier that um, uh, there's a couple of things that, that are interesting. So you heard from the Salon Bella uh, owner that says that uh, we had done no inspections of her property. Um, we actually um, were in contact with several of our customers. Uh, who are very um, friendly with the city, who have been in and out of her facility multiple times. Um, what she failed to tell you is that uh, her statement, not ours, her statement is that. The owner of the property who was in the middle of negotiations advised them not to let the city know. About any deficiencies with their property. And so we had to do the inspection the way that we accomplished it. Uh, we knew that there were certain issues with that particular property. Um, overall, um, with the Chickarelli's, um, there were some discrepancies between our purchase of the tax rolls. And the reality of square footage. And that's because we can only go by published documents, we weren't in there doing measurements. And so if folks don't get building permits, but they knock out walls or change um, a few minutes to a building. The county doesn't know square footage. And so um, we had our uh, city planner go in. Uh, and so for instance, in this document, you actually, I believe, know it was the earlier agenda. Uh, where you see a drawing of that, that's actually, once we acquired it, we went in and we redid all of the. Um, measurements. Um, the prospective uh, client also brought in their contractors and also did interior inspection. So we knew what we were purchasing and in what condition. Um, and we knew uh, that we're going to have to address. So when we brought that agenda item, if you recall, the resolution was very specific to give the city administrator. And the executive director of the U R A specific latitude to address those. If it was in pristine condition, uh, we wouldn't have been buying it because there is blight attached to it. And again, using the words of the uh, owners of Salon Bella. Um, there was pre-existing that was also known to us and that we could see. Um, I have photos where we did that inspection, um, uh, ladders where we were on the roofs. Um, where they went and did a thorough examination. And again, um, our public works director was there. And so we knew exactly what we were buying and we're going to have to address the blight. This is a building that the photo Salon Bella gave us a very lengthy list. And uh, we said that once we had a lease in place, we would start to address that. Um, interior, um, they had already done their interior uh, work. Um, the um, tenants are doing their interior work, that's on them, they get their own permit. Um, it is spelled out in the lease, um, very much like we did with Salon Bella, same thing with the brewery. They got the same identical lease. Um, uh, the brewery came back with some um, uh, proposed modifications. We ran them through the city attorney, we made those. And then we had proposed back the same verbiage um, to Salon Bella. So that they had identical leases, identical terms, identical verbiage on who is responsible. And so that is an area that was tweaked. Um, so I hope that answers your question, if not, um, Ralph can um, uh, further. And then since uh, we have done the purchase, we of course have also done our environmental tests and things of that nature. Just to make sure that when they go into construction, there's no asbestos or um, anything that would be hazardous in the property.
But I don't, I don't think if, uh, correct me if I'm wrong here, but if the property were pristine, you, you R A funds are for blighted. Or, or partially blinded.
It was in perfect condition, uh, there's a couple of misnomers. Uh, the first misnomer is the U R A did not originally approach to buy the property. We actually connected the brewery with the um, uh, with the um. The previous owners, the Chickarelli's, it was actually, and, and um, uh, the uh, as we say, the straw person or the straw man was actually. Uh, Stephanie, who has worked with this brewery and had shown them uh, places well over a year, I believe. Um, it was Naomi uh, Chickarelli that reached out to me in the eleventh hour. And said, uh, the owner uh, appears has an interest in selling. And at that point, in order to assist all parties in play. One, for us to be able to secure the brewery in a uh, ideal location. Uh, in order to um, uh, have them sort of, uh, they did a private deal of acquisition of their equipment. Um, again, a private deal, um, that you then were presented the opportunity to purchase. This, the salon was um, a part of the package deal, it was never the purpose of getting a salon. Um, we're now in the salon business. Um, and so uh, they, they have not agreed to the lease terms, they have not signed a lease. Um, as of this point, you heard that, um, they said that um, uh, their attorney has advised them. Uh, we have been trying to get their attorney to talk to our attorney and they've been playing phone tag. Um, and uh, uh, not actually phone tag, I think we've left messages and they haven't gotten returned yet. So we're waiting for that uh, conversation to occur. Um, there's nothing out of the wazoo, in fact, we actually um, gave a three-step process that I presented to you. As to how to move the rent up, because we didn't want to put anybody out on the street. Um, and even at year three, um, they're still not at full market, full market right now is in the two dollar um, a range. In fact, we, we recently um, uh, put together another package deal. Uh, for the tasting room at the visitor information center um, at that price. And, and of course, we're cognizant of what other pricing. Um, and that, that one is a little more different because it's highway frontage. Um, Main Street fronted and has the parking lot. And so at year three, um, the uh, lease entities. Um, have the option to um, purchase the property at fair market value. It's not our goal, as I've mentioned before, to be in the long-term property business. Um, uh, as far as the salon, as I communicate to you, they've indicated that uh, they want a month a month. We went in, we revised the uh, lease agreement to be month to month. In fact, um, it's the holidays and uh, to show that we're not trying to push them out. We said, we'll just keep your six hundred at the current six hundred, what it is month to month. Get you through to the end of March, it's there. Um, but we have to have a lease agreement to protect the city and the liability to the Urban Renewal Agency. Um, and that gives them the time to renovate the existing. Um, that lease agreement still has not been signed. Um, that lease agreement still has not been signed, um, which is, uh, unfortunate.
I, I want to acknowledge that I saw Councilor Noroff's hand, but I want to make sure I had another, I had a question about the U R A and I want to make sure Jenny's questions were, Councilor Noroff, Councilor Jones' question was answered.
I think so. We, we wouldn't buy, the U R A wouldn't buy a pristine property. We, we buy properties that either have problems or are completely blinded and can't be used.
Buy a pristine property if it was something in your downtown master plan that, for instance, like, we're gonna put a hotel there. And so, yeah, so could it? Yes. Would it make sense to? No. Um, you got this property $300,000, um, below, um, uh, what the commercial, uh, rate was, um, estimated by, um, the foremost, uh, commercial property, uh, realtor, uh, broker in, in Tuesday North Bend. Then so, um, uh, you got very good favorable terms. Um, we have a lease agreement in place, uh, with the brewery. Um, that lease agreement has been presented to the county tax officials. That's another reason to get the lease. If we don't get the lease, I can't send it to the tax assessors because, uh, um, we're required by law. And so, but yes, um, uh, that hopefully answers your question.
So, um, uh, are you, okay, so.
I said, I wanted to know the bakery.
Okay, so let me ask my question, then we'll go to Councilor Noroff and then we'll go back to you. So what I, what I want to make sure that especially for if this is the, you know, kind of the first year with the big U R A, um, you know, proposals and things coming in, is that if you could help the newer counselors understand the process and what the differences are, um, with bids. So for example, on this agenda item tonight, so this is on, um, the U R A and there's a suggested, uh, staff recommends authorization to contract with F R C Construction for this. This is different than if the city was just looking for work, correct? I, I want to make sure that we really highlight what the differences are between when the U R A does a project, um, and then when the city does a project.
So this one could be put out for bid. And in fact, those were questions that was asked of staff when they did the process. Staff is absolutely confident that, one, it's just so to further delay it. You have a timetable. You have only no opportunity. Two, given his professional experience, um, there's no one that's going to come in cheaper than what bid came in. Um, and three, um, it's specialty work, um, meaning that it's actually, you know, brick and mason work. So not everybody can just go in and do it. Um, so those are taken into account. And so, and it is within a certain amount of, um, uh, 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 price point. So the state, uh, procurement doesn't automatically mandate, um, a formal, um, uh, uh, procurement process and they can take the informal. With that, is there anything else you want to add, Rob?
Well, the biggest issue is time is the essence, um, specifically on this occupation. And we could potentially get a lesser expensive bid. I'm not going to say absolutely if we had, um, not the tight timeframe. The people I contacted, I know do very good quality work at a very inexpensive price. Um, and they said they could meet the timeframe. So the time of the essence really was the under state purchasing rules, I think we can go up to $75,000 with a quote system rather than soliciting. Actually, we can go up to 150.
So that's the triggering amount is over 75,000?
Well, 75,000 is prevailing wage rate. 150 is actually, uh, required soliciting bids. And over, I think, 250 is, you have to solicit bids statewide, but that's, I'd have to verify that. We're not violating anything. Um, if you wanted to call this personnel services, you can go up to 100,000. It's really not because it's construction, but, um, it's within state purchasing rules. The city has separate purchasing rules, um, specifically as set by council. Urban renewal doesn't have their own specific purchasing rules.
That, and that was one of the main areas that I wanted to highlight the difference. Is there anything else from the city, um, administrator or the, our attorney that we should highlight since we're going through this U R A process to the council this time as we're making this decision?
I mean, Steph gives you a professional recommendation based on what the legal law is. And it, you know, it, uh, there's nothing, you know, despite the claims that I've heard and, and some of the emails that are flying, there's nothing unusual about what we're doing. Um, uh, the U R A is a special agency. Um, it's no different than, say, a fire district or an, uh, airport district. Um, they own land. The entire airport owns the 30 or 50 acres. They own a lot of acreage out there. Um, they are in the commercial business of buying and selling and renting, you know, the hangars, et cetera. The U R A can indeed stay, if it wanted to, in the, the business. Does it make sense? Absolutely not. Um, you want to be able to go ahead and increment the value. That's why the leases go there. That's why you get the building permits. All of that shows increment of the value. Once, once, you know, and the reality is, is that potentially we're headed into, you know, a, a recession. So you want to stabilize things. The market's not really great right now. Folks aren't able to go out and get seven and eight percent interest loans. Things aren't kind of moving right now. So you don't have folks, you know, begging to pick up things. Um, we saw an opportunity as your executive director to get something very affordable, quick deal, and offer them a cash deal and close it. Um, it was all done legitimately, approved by the body. Um, now we are fixing up the blighted property. Um, and then the goal is that once it's stabilized, to be able to, um, uh, take those proceeds and reinvest them back into the district. That's exactly what urban renewal is designed to do. In fact, we just had a discussion with, uh, uh, our state senator, uh, Dick Anderson and talking about, and he's like, that's exact, and he's a former mayor and he's like, that's exactly what urban renewal agencies are designed to do. And so it's unfortunate that there's a lot of disinformation, misinformation and, um, a lack of interpretation, um, on that. Um, so, um, as we move forward to your next meeting, I would hope that whatever was going to be written in the record is submitted so that it's a part of the record and so that our city, uh, attorney can review it and actually give you a professional opinion. Because in two weeks, you'll be in the same boat where you've heard a whole bunch of stuff and your city attorney is going to say, I need time to go back and research all this now. And that's not where you want to be in two weeks. So that's my humble opinion.
Councilor Noroff, you had your hand up earlier. Was there a question that you had?
There, yes, there, there are certain, there's a real big statute, state statute, O R S four, five, seven, that governs urban renewal. There's a section on there on what happens when the urban renewal district acquires property. I recommend that you read it. It is included in today's council packet.
Okay.
And, and the city is supposed to have specific guidelines on the acquisition of property and the disposal of property, either by sale or by lease. And as a counselor slash urban renewal director, I haven't seen anything specified on leases until after the fact, which is not in accordance with the guidelines that I have distributed today. The other thing is that the leases presented to the Salon Bella said that they were responsible. They didn't sign it because it's a constructive eviction lease. And it is a thing and you can look it up online. And it says that the owner is responsible for zero repairs, except the sidewalk accro- outside the building. That is not the lease that was signed by North Forty Beer Company. Their attorney recommended them not to sign it. And Mr. Milliron, in the email that he sent the council slash directors, said, oh, we would tell them what we would fix after they signed the lease. No smart person is going to sign a lease like that. The list of deficiencies with the building is substantial. The city did not offer to pay anything before they signed the lease. It is not the same lease as what was given or, or negotiated by North Forty Brewing Company. And the guidelines that you're going to read s- specifically call out that for leases or for sales of property acquired by the U R A, there should be R F Ps or R F Qs. And it prefers R F Qs because there's a bigger explanation of the fine print. So that's your homework for next week. Because I think at this point, we're setting precedent and I don't think it's a good precedent. It seems to me that it's been very freewheeling and, and it is not something that was done with disclosures to the U R A on these leases. And I have a problem with that. And I think the public has a problem with it, in my opinion.
I've got our attorney online right now and it sounds like, um, there are some accusations of things not being disclosed properly. Can you clarify for the record that, um, I think the actual words were, um?
Yeah, so, so Counselor Nor- Noroff's correct that there's a statute that imposes some obligations on the city to restrict what uses U R A property can be utilized for. And they have to tie back to the, to the plan, to, to the U R A plan. And part of the U R A plan is economic development, economic, um, feasibility. And, and leasing U R A property to a, a restaurant, a business, a salon, those are all things that, that would fall under that, that plan authority. So those restrictions are in place and they, they are in the lease. And if, and if, if these businesses ceased to operate businesses, then those leases could be, um, could be terminated.
Mayor Engleke, I have a response to Mr. Wolf's statement.
Mister, I, Councilor Noroff, can you wait a minute? Uh, Mr. Wolf, would you like to hear, uh, Counselor Noroff's response to that now or wait for a later date?
Either way.
Okay, Councilor Noroff, go ahead.
Okay, this is on page thirty, twenty-seven, titled, uh, Property Acquisition and Relocation.
Twenty-seventh of the chapter twenty-six, Economic Development?
It's in our U R A plan. This is our, our, the city's urban renewal.
Okay.
The establishment of the renewal plan provides the opportunity for property in the district to be acquired and developed. In the future, if property, properties are identified for acquisition by the urban renewal agency, the plan will be amended to specifically indicate which properties will be acquired. Acquisition and redevelopment may result in the displacement of businesses and possibly residents. In the event of displacement, the, uh, the renewal agency will establish a relocation policy, which will call for the agency's assistance to those residents and businesses displaced. Such as, such assistance may include providing information regarding suitable locations, payments of moving expenses and other payments as deemed necessary. So there's no development here. It, it says that it should be amended if you're going to acquire property and, and give yourself some, some guidance on how to do this.
But all of that is done.
Excuse me, we have, this is the plan. It has not been amended to specify how the district acquires property and disposes of property, either by sale or by lease. That is why I'm pointing it out that this needs to be corrected to establish some guidelines and some processes for leases of property because it's, right now, it's kind of like the Wild West. The urban renewal district did not see the leases being offered to these properties until I asked about it. And we have not, has not come from Mr. Milliron.
Thank you, thank you, Councilor Noroff. To the. Thank you, Councilor Noroff. So I thought our city attorney, uh, still here, and Mr. Milliron, would you want to make a comment? Now, I, I know our attorney, if he went to law school, has been a part of the acquisition, the lease agreements and, um, who understands, practices, interprets the law, has been part of this the whole time. Is that correct?
Correct. The city attorney has been involved throughout the whole process. Throughout, has reviewed all of the leases, has created the leases, um, has gone back and forth. There's misstatements and I understand that sometimes when someone tries to make a point, sometimes they have blinders. So I'll repeat kind of what I said earlier. What I said earlier was that both parties were given copies of the draft lease. Both parties were given the opportunity to give feedback. We only received feedback from one, the brewery. We then took that language and worked with the city attorney and we had version two of the lease. The brewery signed it. Stephanie and I went in and presented the, uh, um, uh, went to meet to present the updated version because we asked them, the owners of the Salon Bella, in writing a couple of times, if there's any issues, questions about the draft lease, please present them to us so that we can review them by the attorney. Cricket. When we got and met at Salon Bella, um, we had a copy of the updated because we knew that that was one of the issues that they went to a talk and address about. However, they said they're not, weren't interested in moving it further because they weren't signing the lease anyway. So I told them it was a moot point to talk about that. However, when they said they wanted to go to month-to-month, that specific language that they didn't want to hear was specifically put in the lease. And so the leases are the same. And so I hate to be accused of like, I'm doing Houdini over here and swapping out and doing different deals or having emails passed around that says we're taking bribes and kickbacks and all of that stuff for someone that doesn't even drink beer. The reality is, um, the board authorized its executive director with specific powers for which the counselor also raised her hand and voted and is on record. But now wants to say, I gotcha. So whatever she has that she wants to read in the record, if you'd please give it to the city recorder, we'll get it to the city attorney. We will ask for a formal opinion. And so in two weeks, you can have a formal opinion by the attorney. Otherwise, I suspect that because she used some interesting verbiage, so I really wonder how much ex parte conversations have gotten in the middle of what I call, um, some lease and business dealings between the executive director and the agency. Because there's a lot of ex parte conversations apparently going on. But, um, this way, we're not here in two weeks and then having to wait until January for the city attorney then to go back and re-research it. We are supposed to be a team, not a gotcha committee or gotcha or inquisition board. If there are some notes and documentation, I've seen two pages that she flips through, simply present it so we can actually get this resolved and be a team and move it forward. That's all we want to do.
Okay, two weeks, we're moving.
So again, for clarification, our well-educated attorney who understands U R A was a part of all of these leases discussions concerning a property. And today, what's before us in the work session is some yard improvements. We have one, um, proposal in front of us. I wanted to, that was a little bit longer than I thought we were going to have a conversation on. But it's important to me because again, I'm hearing these comments over here like it's the wild, wild west or whatever she said. This is not the wild, wild west. We are following policy. We are following procedure. We are following what's in the U R A. We have a trusted attorney that we, that, that works for the city of North Bend. Um, all of North Bend and is ensuring that all of North Bend's policies and procedures are being held up. So is there any questions of why this might be a different than if we were doing a regular city? Um, you know, work in the city. There's one, one, um, proposal. We've heard from our, um, public works director, what, uh, why he has professional recommendations of why that this is a bid. I just don't want any confusion of, of, of why that is.
I don't think so.
Okay, okay, all right. So with that being said, let's see where we're at here in the urban renewal agency agenda for tomorrow night. We have that piece toward the work. We would have our executive director's report and then we would have it, the adjournments. Okay, then to, yes.
Is there a board meeting tonight?
Tonight, six o'clock. So we have less than 20 minutes to get out of here. But if I go back to our meeting or our. Tonight, six o'clock. So we have less than twenty minutes to get out of here. But if I go back to our meeting or our uh. Agenda for tonight, after reviewing the urban renewal agency.